Six is a month.
Right, well, that's we're right there. Right, well, that's we're right there. So if it's, um, what time is it? So if it's, um, what time is it? Yeah, if if you want to, um, Yeah, if if you want to, um, because what we just have to do is the president then turn the meeting over to the new president, because what we just have to do is the president then turn the meeting over to the new president, then nominate a vice president and then a secretary. then nominate a vice president, and then a secretary. And our the secretary from last year, Vicki Faust, Councilman Frost. And our the secretary from last year, Vicki Faust, Councilman Frost, Foster, Foster. Foster, 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 thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Foster. Foster. Um, she's not here, but that. Um, she's not here, but that.
I was secretary the year before. I was secretary the year before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, today is Monday, January 13th, 2025. Okay, today is Monday, January 13th, 2025. That's Sunny Side and Desolate Corporation social media is now open. That's Sunny Side and Desolate Corporation social media is now open. Then we have a zoom meeting tonight. Then we have a zoom meeting tonight.
Is your microphone on right in the chest? Is your microphone on right in the chest? There should be a. There should be a.
A green light there. A green light there.
It's not. It's not.
Now it's green. Now it's green.
Now it's. Now it's.
Now you can hear me better. Now you can hear me better.
And now we give you. And now we give you.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Do you want me to start over? Do you want me to start over?
No, you're good. No, you're good.
Good, okay. Good, okay. Uh, Uh, hey, we'll get going with the agenda. hey, we'll get going with the agenda. We need to call call to order roll call. We need to call call to order roll call.
Councilmember Ripley. Councilmember Ripley.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Beeler. Councilmember Beeler. Councilmember Frosto. Councilmember Frosto. Councilmember Hart. Councilmember Hart.
Here. Here.
Deputy Mayor Galvin. Deputy Mayor Galvin.
Yeah. Yeah.
Councilmember Vasquez. Councilmember Vasquez.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Bozeman. Uh, Mayor Bozeman. Court Commissioner Martin. Court Commissioner Martin.
Here. Here.
Court Commissioner Gubinoff. Court Commissioner Gubinoff.
Present. Present.
Court Commissioner Martin. Court Commissioner Martin. Oh, speaking to me, I'm here twice. Oh, speaking to me, I'm here twice.
That should be Tyler Skillproof, but he's not here. That should be Tyler Skillproof, but he's not here.
He's not here. He's not here.
How was his name? How was his name?
Yes, Tyler Skillproof. Yes, Tyler Skillproof.
Uh, we have four councilmembers and two political representatives present for the meeting today. Uh, we have four councilmembers and two political representatives present for the meeting today.
So six total. So six total. That is the minimum form for having the meeting, so we shall continue. That is the minimum form for having the meeting, so we shall continue. Uh, Uh, we'll accept a motion for the minutes of January 9th, 2023, special meeting. we'll accept a motion for the minutes of January 9th, 2023, special meeting.
So move. So move. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. I'll I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Julia, move to approve. Okay, Julia, move to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
George's second motion. George's second motion. Okay, all those in for their discussion or questions on the Okay, all those in for their discussion or questions on the minutes? minutes?
No, no. No, no.
The hearing done will vote on the minutes. The hearing done, we'll vote on the minutes. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those approve, say aye. Those approve, say aye. My hearing, no, will the minutes minutes are approved. My hearing, no, will the minutes minutes are approved.
Um, excuse me, but Commissioner Skillproof is here. Um, excuse me, but Commissioner Skillproof is here.
Tyler Skillproof from the port has joined us, so it gives us seven. Tyler Skillproof from the port has joined us, so it gives us seven. Okay, we'll move on to election of officers Okay, we'll move on to election of officers for 2025. for 2025. And it will open for nominations for president. And it will open for nominations for president.
Um, I'd like to nominate Tyler Skillproof. Um, I'd like to nominate Tyler Skillproof.
Second. Second.
Tyler Skillproof has been nominated. Tyler Skillproof has been nominated. You accept, is that okay? You accept, is that okay?
Yeah, no, that's. Yeah, no, that's.
Availability. Availability. Okay, is any other motions for president? Okay, is any other motions for president? Okay, Dean Burisma has Okay, Dean Burisma has shown up, so now we have eight. shown up, so now we have eight. Any other nominations for president? Any other nominations for president? Okay, the chair will accept a motion to close the nominations. Okay, the chair will accept a motion to close the nominations.
A motion to close the nominations. A motion to close the nominations? I will second it. I will second it.
Okay, George made the motion to close the nominations. Okay, George made the motion to close the nominations. Dean Burisma seconded it. Dean Burisma seconded it. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried, so we will vote Okay, motion carried, so we will vote on Tyler Skillproof for president. on Tyler Skillproof for president. And Debbie, you need to call that. And Debbie, you need to call that.
But. But.
Just to just to have a good count. Just to just to have a good count.
Do you want to? Do you want to? Do you want a roll call? Do you want a roll call?
Just a roll.
Just a roll.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote for nominating Tyler. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote for nominating Tyler.
For Tyler for the. For Tyler for the.
President. President. Councilor or Mayor Bozeman? Councilor or Mayor Bozeman?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hart? Councilmember Hart?
Yes. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Galvin? Deputy Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Ripley? Councilmember Ripley?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Frosto? Councilmember Frosto?
Yes. Yes.
Or Vasquez, sorry. Or Vasquez, sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Um, Commissioner Martin? Um, Commissioner Martin?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Grubenoff? Commissioner Grubenoff?
Yes. Yes.
And do you vote also? And do you vote also?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, okay. The vote is unanimous. The vote is unanimous.
You got to have unanimous. You got to have unanimous. The vote is unanimous at eight to zero. The vote is unanimous at eight to zero. Good, and, uh, Good, and, uh, Debbie, do we have all the papers for him there? Debbie, do we have all the papers for him there?
Um, I do, I just wrote on. Um, I do, I just wrote down.
I think it's all there. I think it's all there.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. You get here late, you get to be president. You get here late, you get to be president. I wish I had a really big story to tell you why I was late. I wish I had a really big story to tell you why I was late.
I'm kind of in the same boat there, sir, so. I'm kind of in the same boat there, sir, so.
So where were we? So where were we? I just got here. I just got here.
Okay, we're on to the nominations for vice president. Okay, we're on to the nominations for vice president.
So do I hear any nominations for vice president? So do I hear any nominations for vice president?
I nominate George Galvin. I nominate George Galvin.
I'll second it. I'll second it. Am I supposed to second it? Am I supposed to second it?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is the nomination, not a motion. This is the nomination, not a motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So, no. So, no.
I'd like to nominate myself, I'd like to nominate myself, Julia Hart. Julia Hart.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Well, you don't have to second it, somebody can. Well, you don't have to second it, somebody can.
On nomination. On nomination.
It's. It's.
Good grief. Good grief.
I know. I know.
Well. Well.
Well, move them. Well, move them. Like move the mission nominations be closed. I can move the mission nominations be closed.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
There you can second that. There you can second that.
You seconded it, I'm sorry. You seconded it, I'm sorry.
Uh, the mayor. Uh, the mayor.
I was slow. I was slow.
That's only because I was too slow to make the motion. That's only because I was too slow to make the motion. She got ahead of me. She got ahead of me.
Now we get a vote, Tyler. Now we get a vote, Tyler.
Okay, so we have two nominations, Julia Hart and George Galvan. Okay, so we have two nominations, Julia Hart and George Galvan. Uh, do we want to do a same kind of vote? Uh, do we want to do a same kind of vote?
Do one and then do the other. Do one and then do the other.
Okay, so all, uh, let's start with Mr. Bozeman for Julia Hart. Okay, so all, uh, let's start with Mr. Bozeman for Julia Hart.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Julia Hart, George? Julia Hart, George?
Yes.
Yes.
Vicki? Vicki?
No. No.
Ms. Vasquez? Ms. Vasquez?
For Julia?
For Julia?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Martin?
George said yes, so I'll say yes. George said yes, so I'll say yes.
Commissioner Grubenoff? Commissioner Grubenoff?
This was for Julia, right? This was for Julia, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think the yeses have it. So I think the yeses have it. Uh, do we do we go ahead and vote again? Uh, do we do we go ahead and vote again?
No. No.
I.
I.
No. No.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think it's pretty. I think it's pretty.
And all of you three voted for Julia? And all of you three voted for Julia?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
There was one no vote, that was. There was one no vote, that was.
One no vote by Ripley.
One no vote by Ripley.
Okay, so do I hear any nominations for the secretary for the Industrial Development Corporation? Okay, so do I hear any nominations for the secretary for the Industrial Development Corporation?
I nominate Karen Vasquez. I nominate Karen Vasquez.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I moved that the nominations be closed. I moved that the nominations be closed. I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, so we have one nominee for secretary, Karen Vasquez. Okay, so we have one nominee for secretary, Karen Vasquez.
Move the nominations be closed. Move the nominations be closed.
I did that already. I did that already.
Oh, you did that. Oh, you did that. Did I second it? Did I second it?
George seconded it. George seconded it.
Second it, it's all seconded it. Second it, it's all seconded it.
So let's vote again, just like we did. So let's vote again, just like we did. Dean? Dean?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
George? George?
Yes. Yes.
Vicki? Vicki?
Yes, if I vote for myself. Yes, if I vote for myself.
Karen, that's Karen. Karen, that's Karen.
Yeah, I was just. Yeah, I was just. She was gonna say anything. She was gonna say anything. Uh, Commissioner Martin? Uh, Commissioner Martin?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. So So that is unanimous. that is unanimous. Uh, so we have the secretary, Tyler Skillproof, vice president, uh, Julia Hart, Uh, so we have the secretary, Tyler Skillproof, vice president, uh, Julia Hart, and a secretary, Karen Vasquez. and a secretary, Karen Vasquez. Is there any other business that we need to bring up? Is there any other business that we need to bring up? Any think of anything? Any think of anything? Uh, time is 5:48, and if there's no other business to come up, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Uh, time is 5:48, and if there's no other business to come up, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. I'll adjourn. I'll adjourn. I need my hammer. I need my hammer. No, it's too small. No, it's too small.
You're so fussy. You're so fussy.
Hey. Okay. All right. All right.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Very good. Very good. Mr. Grubenoff, what did you do? Mr. Grubenoff, what did you do? You're you're all bundled up here. You're you're all bundled up here.
Uh, a little bit fuzzy. Uh, a little bit clumsy, I had a spill to my shoulder and my arm fractured. I had a spill to my shoulder and my arm fractured.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear. Well, get well soon. Well, get well soon. Mend those bones. Mend those bones.
We don't mend this place at the youth school. We don't mend this place at the youth school.
That's that's what I understand. That's that's what I understand.
What do you think about that? What do you think about that?
Aye. Aye.
Your bouncer gonna. Your bouncer gonna.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
New Year, you guys. Happy New Year, you guys. Let's see if I can do this now. Let's see if I can do this now. Get signed in before we add this. Get signed in before we add this.
Taking sweater off, I'll be just cold. Taking sweater off, I'll be just cold.
I mean, what are they trying to do? I mean, what are they trying to do? Come on. Come on.
I'm here to run cameras. I'm here to run cameras.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Come on, why aren't you opening, opening, open, open, open? Come on, why aren't you opening, opening, open, open, open? I think she's homesick. I think she's homesick.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she she won't. Oh, yeah, she she won't.
She won't be here, okay. She won't be here, okay.
Ah, fudge rony, what is going on here? Ah, fudge rony, what is going on here? Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go. Now I got her. Now I got her.
So up here. So up here.
Right. Right. Back up. Back up. Back up, Madam Hart. Back up, Madam Hart. You know what the problem is here. You know what the problem is here.
They'll start in this chair. They'll start in this chair.
There's that. There's that.
Good. Good. There we go. There we go.
Mike's gonna be here just a couple of minutes late. Mike's gonna be here just a couple of minutes late. How you doing, Ross? How you doing, Ross?
Hey, how are you today? Hey, how are you today? Like a jacket, matches my sweater. Like a jacket, matches my sweater.
Right. Right.
So I have these two at the end of the seat. This, the back order needs to go past it. This, the back order needs to go past it.
So that means, so that's the same as this? So that means, so that's the same as this?
The vice. The vice.
Does any improvements? Does any improvements? Yeah, that just needs to be. Yeah, that just needs to be.
Good thing to know is.
Didn't hide that well, huh?
The good thing is they don't meet very often, so you're off the hook to. Tonight's meeting.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first council regular meeting for 2025. For the record, all members of our council are here with the exception of Council Beeler and Council Frausto. Council Frausto has asked for and received an excused absence for tonight. If there's no objection from council, we can wait and give Council Beeler an opportunity to arrive. Very good, and then we're missing a couple of staff members. Our city clerk is not feeling well today, and Chief Hubrick has a family obligation tonight, so. All right. Council Beeler says here, we'll try to connect via Zoom, and Casey cannot connect. He's requested an excused absence, so there we have it. I had not even read the note, so if there's no objection, can we give Council Beeler an excused absence?
No objection.
Very good. Council Beeler is excused, and he will attempt to be here via Zoom. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Council staff has requested that we change the order on one item under the active agenda. Item A and B need to be switched around because the one has to happen before we can approve the other.
I'm sorry. Claim vouchers before.
Uh, before, active agenda.
Oh, active excuse.
Items A and B on the active agenda, the TIB Complete Streets Award and Citywide Pedestrian Improvements. We have to approve item B before we can approve item A.
No objection. I have no objection.
No objection.
All right. All right, council, is any other item that needs to be changed on the agenda added or removed?
No.
Hearing none, what is the desire of council on our agenda as modified?
To approve?
A second.
Okay, we got a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Council Vasquez, to approve the agenda as modified. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. I guess there's only five of us tonight. All right, next item is invocation. Do we have somebody here this evening to give an invocation? All right, we ask that you please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, I'm advised that I'm the backup, so.
Thank you for being here.
Happy to do that. Our Father in Heaven. This evening, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to be here together for this meeting of the Sunnyside City Council. We're grateful for all those that serve here for our city, be they members of the council or staff. We ask a blessing on them as they deliberate tonight, that the decisions they will be made, that will be taken, will be in the best interest of our, our city and those who live here. Grateful for all the blessings we receive, Pethai hand, and say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, may be seated. And I want to just give everybody a heads up. If I'm taking some time in between things, I am asked to take very copious notes this evening in case the live stream doesn't go well and our clerk needs to try to read my notes, so. All right, next item of business is a recognition. So we have citizens in our community who are taking on tasks that many of us do not know about. And they're very involved in our community, they have served us in many different ways. And there is one citizen who has taken on a role completely voluntarily. When, if you look at our old version of the rules of procedure, it says that the beginning of our meeting, we will be opening by an invocation, and the person who is going to be leading that invocation is chosen by the Sunnyside Ministerial Association. The Sunnyside Ministerial Association has been defunct for a number of years, and yet the rule is still there, that our meetings still start with an invocation, and it takes somebody to coordinate that. And so in the absence of the Ministerial Association, Mrs. Sandra Lindy has stepped up and volunteered to take on that role. And she has done it now for a number of years without bringing any attention to herself, just making sure that there is somebody. Sometimes it's herself, sometimes it's her husband, sometimes it's someone else. But she has been pounding the pavement, getting pastors and associate pastors and, and to come and give us an invocation. And I would like to recognize that dedication by awarding her with a mayor's coin, so Mrs. Lindy, I'd like you to come forward. Very much appreciate your efforts on that. I know it takes a great deal of time to make that happen, and so. They're gonna reject his absence on. All right.
Oh.
All right, and I'm sitting down and probably shouldn't have because we have a couple other volunteers in our audience this evening who are going to be recognized through being sworn in and taking an oath of office. We have two members of our planning commissioner who are being sworn in this evening. Is Doug Shannon here? No, okay, so our third member is unable to be here this evening. But I'm going to ask Britt Moore and Tom Dolan to come forward and be sworn in. All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I, Britt Moore.
I, Britt Moore.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, depose and say.
Being first duly sworn. Start over. Okay, I'm so sorry, being first duly sworn upon oath. Depose and say.
That I will well and truly perform the duties of the office.
That I will well and truly perform the duties of office.
As a member of the planning commission.
As a member of the planning commission.
Of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
Of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside.
And the ordinance of the city of Sunnyside.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of the office on which I am about to enter.
The duties of the office on which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Sign, yeah, yeah, I'll shake your hand as well, but I'll sign these and then we're official. Evacuations. I, Tom Dolan.
It's been ten years.
I, Tom Dolan. Being first duly sworn upon oath, depose and say.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, depose and say.
That I will well and truly perform the duties.
That I will well and truly perform the duties.
Of office as a member of the planning commission of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
Of office as a member of the planning commission of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside.
And the ordinance of the city of Sunnyside.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evading.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office on which I'm about to enter.
Of the office on which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sign these and sign them, and we get a.
Here's pens right here. You did, you just read it.
You just read it.
Yeah, I'll own your mind.
That's right, no curbing copy anymore. Yeah. One's yours. And I do want to thank these individuals for their willingness to serve in this capacity. Putting yourself out there sometimes involves being in the public eye, and the public can sometimes be a harsh critic, but yet the role of these planning commissioners is very important. And so I appreciate very much people's willingness to serve. All right, next item on our agenda is public comments, and I have a list of three. The first name on my list is Jim Stevens. Dr. Stevens, are you present? He's late. All right, well, if he appears during this time, then we'll give him a shot. The next name on my list is Sharon Dolan.
Sharon Dolan, Sunnyside. Looking over tonight's packet, I noticed a section in check register, page six, where it appears that there are remittances to current and former employees. The remittances are dated 12/23 through 11, or 12/23/2023 through 11/27/2024. I have very minimal accounting knowledge, but it appears that some of these items were paid but not deducted from appropriate fund or accounts and are being cleared now. I was wondering if there is documentation of these expenses. I would also like to commend and thank Debbie Zabel and her staff for reconstructing the mess that was left by former administration. I would also like to thank her for reporting the good and bad news with transparency and explanations. You are appreciated. Because of half-truths and errors by former administration, I would again like to request a forensic audit, but now I would like it dated back to 2023. Counsel, how much proof do you need? Thank you.
And to answer that question, I would have to defer to our finance director. I don't know if you have an answer for that right now, or if you're able to get back to Mrs. Dolan on that question.
I, I can do either one. Whatever you counsel would prefer.
Oh, right now, be fine.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and give us an answer at this point? I think Mrs. Dolan would like to hear that, too.
So we did have a number of credit card statements where invoices from previous staff had not been submitted to finance to be processed through the city's financial software. So myself, along with some of the other finance staff, spent a good week calling other agencies where these credit card charges had been used to get the invoices and receipts for those statements so that we could get them processed through our financials. So yes, we did process some that were from as far back as July of 2023.
Okay, thank you. Council, answer the question for you? Mrs. Dolan, does that answer the question for you?
No, it doesn't explain how to remedy and how, how do we know where we stand financially when we're going back?
Okay, and this is, this is something that needs to be corrected, and, and I believe Mrs. Zabel would be happy to meet with you and, and kind of explain that to you. We can't really do it from here, it doesn't work, so.
It's not the present, and Mrs. Zabel, it's the past.
I understand, you are right.
Even audit, that's what we need, we need a friend who got it, that's my point.
Okay, thank you. Next name on my list is Britt Moore.
Good evening, everyone, Britt Moore from Sunnyside. I just want to give a public service announcement. Next Wednesday night, here in this room at six o'clock, we have our crime watch meeting. We have a lot of traction right now with all the activity going on here in Sunnyside. Dave Swales did a TV interview on Apple TV last week. We're trying to get the link, Dave, did you ever get that link? We've not gotten the link yet, but once we get that, we'll share it on Facebook and, and just kind of get that exposure out there of, of getting people at the meeting, people are interested, and so we're having a lot of people sign up for that meeting for next week. I also want to thank the city of Sunnyside and everyone involved, serving as planning commissioner, has been a, a, a great experience, very important, I take it very seriously, and I hope I can serve the city well. The last thing is forensic audit. I know we've been talking about that for quite a while, you're probably tired of hearing it, but Deb Zabel has done an incredible job with the little bit of documentation that she has. It's only fair to her to be able to go back and see where mistakes were made, where things didn't get documented, and I'm asking again that we consider a forensic audit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Dr. Stevens has not arrived, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. All right, consent agenda, payroll vouchers. Approved payroll voucher numbers 119664 through 119668 and wire transfers as listed for $744,252.33 for the period ending November 15, 2024. Approved payroll voucher numbers 119669 through 119677 and wire transfers as listed for $668,417.10 for the period ending on November 30, 2024. Approved payroll voucher numbers 119678 through 119683 and wire transfers as listed for $708,469.20 for the period ending on December 15, 2024. Claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers 110847 through 110853 and wire transfers as listed for $12,088.50 for the period ending on December 9, 2024. Approved claim voucher numbers 110854 through 110857 and wire transfers as listed for $5,533.32 for the period ending on December 23, 2024. Approved claim voucher numbers 110858 through 110964 and wire transfers as listed for $1,079,479.33 for the period ending on December 30, 2024. And approved claim voucher numbers 110966 through 110978 and wire transfers as listed for $278,359.77 for the period ending on January 9, 2025. And approved municipal court claim vouchers 9411 through 9439 as listed for $6,286.65 for the period ending on December 30, 2024. Council, is there anything from the consent agenda that you'd like to remove for discussion? Ms. Ripley.
I had a question on 117993.
On 7993, okay, any others?
Go ahead.
17983, 17981, 17984, 17988. 18090. No, just one of them is, one of them is.
Okay, let's give Ms. Ripley the opportunity first, and then we'll go with the deputy mayor.
It was for APSCO LLC, it was a pump rebuild. I was just wondering what pump that was.
That would be a wastewater pump from the wastewater facility. I would have to get more details exactly to what pump, because obviously there's multiple pumps there, but I can email you that information.
Thank you.
All right. And then, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I'll start with 17983, the, the postage, and if I understood your email, Ms. Zabel, those are transactions that happened throughout the 2024, but they just weren't reported until now that you're able to find them. Or what, how did you find, how did you find them?
Well, we have a number of transactions vendors that we pay by EFT, so they just automatically take their payment out of our account, but they still have to be processed in our financials. So as we had been going through the check registers, they had not been processed through our financials up until this point.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed kind of strange to have all of those postage and, and the corporate, that makes more.
And they, they really should have been, you know, Januaries, in January, February, you know, in each month.
So it's a monthly thing, okay. The next one is the 17981. Let me get to it.
This is for Department of Revenue for our excise taxes?
Yeah, so it's, it's, a while back, city manager emailed me, transactions were from 24, 23, and 20. twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two. Are these also late fees from just twenty-four?
So.
There's about twenty thousand dollars in late fees that the city is paying because they it wasn't done on a monthly basis. What about twenty-three in that um? Do we have anything outstanding that needs to be paid in twenty-three? Is that in that in the transaction list for two thousand and twenty-three? I couldn't find anything for Department of Revenue.
From the list?
Of all the transactions of the city.
Well, they should have been in there. I can go back and this is the one that I had emailed.
Was it you that emailed? There was you emailed for?
All of twenty.
Yeah, all of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I just couldn't find anything in in twenty-three.
Revenue?
Yeah, that we paid anything for the Department of Revenue.
Yeah, we should. Yes, we would have.
So we should have some in two thousand and twenty-three. Okay. Yeah, if you could, if you could check that out, that definitely help out this.
And this is what we we pay excise tax on our water sewer, garbage, um, parks, recreation, pools.
Yeah, yeah, I just I saw the transactions for twenty-four and twenty-two, just not twenty-three. Um, the next one is one-seven-nine-eighty-four, and I think this has to do with what Ms. Dolan uh brought up, but do we have a? Do we have a list of of, I guess, memberships or auto renewal? This kind of reminds me of when people have two, three Netflix, right? And they pay and they just keep paying and 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 they forget about it. Do we? Do we have something that we have? Okay. This department has this membership and it renews every month or it renews every year?
I do not know if we do. I don't know exactly what all vendors use the E F T process. This particular invoice is for the um the city's purchasing cards. So these were actual purchasing cards, charges on individuals' cards.
On that same one, there's there's two transactions for cable services for the senior center. One's at one-hundred-and-two-ninety-seven cents and the other one's at three-eleven and eighty-four cents. Um, was that for the same month? Do we know? Or was that part of the ones that?
I have to um. I, oh, I see the three-eleven right there, cable services for.
Mm-hmm. And then the on the previous page, there's one-for-one-oh-two-ninety-seven.
Cable services for the senior center. I don't have an answer to give you other than it looks like one is for one month and one is for two months, and yes, they could be that far behind.
Okay. And the next one, um, I read the email. I that that was, I just didn't have enough time today to reply to to your email that for the responding ones for one-seven-nine-eighty-eight. Um, but if you could explain, I guess, to counsel what that is and and what your email read that we are now over budget?
Oh, yes. So at some at some point, um, and hopefully Chief Lehman can help me with this, the city entered into a contract with Amoresco to do an energy retrofit to convert um to L E D lighting throughout the city. So there was a number of streetlights, park lights, um, lights within City Hall, and this was the remainder of the invoicing for that project. Um, and it um was two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. It was an unknown um that we were going to be expecting this bill. Um, the largest charge was for parks um and some of the uh retrofit that occurred for the lighting in the parks, and that was budgeted to be paid out of the REIT fund. And so I did not know that that invoice was coming, so we had done the budget amendment, and that invoice had not come. So now, when we look at the budget for twenty-twenty-four, council appropriated, you know, so much dollars, but now with this invoice coming through, we've now overspent what council has appropriated. So that's how we will be having to submit that for our annual report is that we overspent on on that fund.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that was for work done in twenty-three, wasn't it?
Um, no, this is twenty-four.
Is is that replacement matter made uh there?
All right, Raul.
That that work was done in twenty-four.
But it was replacement lights?
It was, yeah, it was an audit that was done and 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 uh to re to upgrade the lighting system throughout all the city buildings and parks and some streetlights down on Midvale.
Okay, so that wasn't the big streetlight swap that happened in over the course of twenty-one and twenty-two, right?
No, this is this is just recent, yeah.
In within the building, the lights and Midvale Road streetlights. Okay.
Yes. So can I ask?
You may ask a question.
Question on on the L E D lights. Uh, there was the ones that there was just in this past year, if I'm not uh, I could be mistaken, for at the Central Park around the um skate park, where there there was some work done on those lights in there. Was this is this amount of money part of that in twenty-four?
It was in parks and and city facilities, um, and then some streetlights as well. This is all part of that, all done in twenty-four.
And this is all out of Public Works?
Uh, well, it was done through different departments.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to figure out which ones, because you were talking to the chief, and I was wondering, do you do lights now?
No, he just was, he was the inner city manager at that time. It was.
Oh, right.
The one that uh.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you. I now I get it.
It was a contract that city manager, all the entered into Amoresco.
Right.
And I want to say that that happened in twenty-three.
Yes.
The contract was entered into.
And it went into, yes, and then they were installed in twenty-four.
Right.
Right.
That's what my memory of that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one um is one-eight's one-eight-zero-nine-zero, and I did get your response, um, Derek, on the whole dog thing, but uh, you know, I I just, it just keeps coming up, right? We keep spending money on 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 sending dogs to the dog pound in Yakima, and we still don't have any revenue for for dog licenses. Um, I really think that we we need to start pushing that. Um, you know, it's no, it's not fair for the rest of the public to pay these these fees that, you know, we're picking up the dogs and send them to Yakima. Um, responsible, you know, dog owners are gonna keep them inside, but uh those that are not responsible, we really need to start uh enforcing some of these dog licenses. And we're we're creating, by not doing that, we're creating an issue with with dogs, and now we have to build a dog pound or a shelter, and now we have to have uh, you know, dog control, but uh I strongly believe if if we enforce what we have on the books, uh, the problem shouldn't be that big, and people need to start understanding and they need to start um taking care of their animals and and registering their dogs.
Just, can I add just before you answer that?
Yeah.
It seems to me that I just recently got in the mail, because I've registered my dogs in the past, I got my bill to re-register them, so the tabs licensing thing has gone out in the billing, and it startled me because, oh, crap, I let the dogs out.
They did not get billed for twenty-twenty-four.
The.
Licensing, dog licensing did not get billed.
They there wasn't any building went out last year. This is for twenty-twenty-five.
I think revenue-wise in twenty-twenty-four, what is it, lower than five hundred bucks in in dog licenses, like licenses? And we do have a lot of dogs out there, and and for the most part, these dog owners, they take care of the dogs, right? They keep them, they keep them tied up or inside the their homes or properties, but there's always gonna be dogs that we're gonna be picking up, and everybody else has to pay for it. I just don't think that's uh for.
Pet owners are the ones that are licensing their pets.
Yeah. And that's it.
All right. So the answers you received, are they satisfactory?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Zabel and everybody else, uh, Raul, um, Derek, for your guys' answers via email.
All right. Having had our questions answered, what is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. So we've got a motion by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Vasquez to approve.
Ripley.
Ripley, I'm sorry. I just heard it from over there and. All right. Motion by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Ripley to approve the consent agenda as explained. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. A two vote aye, motion passes. All right. Active agenda, here we have switched items A and B on the published agenda, because we have to pass item B. First, citywide pedestrian improvements. Approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement and all associated documents with the award. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Transportation Improvement Board, uh, better known as T I B in most circles, has awarded the city of Sunnyside a grant in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to complete the balance of improvements, which include replacement of twenty-six non-compliant A D A ramps. There's a fifteen percent match of seventy-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars from our Capitol Street Fund. The total project cost is estimated at five-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. All work must be completed in the twenty-twenty twenty-five calendar year. Uh, these improvements are consistent with the city's six-year transportation improvement plan and the findings of the self-evaluation phase of the A D A transition plan. Raul Sanchez is here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Sanchez. Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I thought you were gonna report first, but I have some questions.
I mean, yeah, I could do either one.
Either. Oh, we'll let you report.
Okay. So, yes, just to let you know, the last year, this is a continuation that we what we did on sixteenth and and uh on Sixth Street. This is another award, just like that one, for uh on the site plan that you have there shows you in in red uh what was um to be done next, and what's in blue is what was done in twenty-four. Um, these are in the these um intersections are what we applied for based on that it's what's left around the school area. Um, this also um based on the time that the award came in is to um get everything done before and be ready so that the contractor can start as soon as school gets out. Last year, one of the issues that we ran into was obviously there was a little bit of uh um concern with the with the construction and 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 children going across. So if everything goes right, we should be able to be ready, start right after school. This is only a uh it's only about a twenty-day uh project, so um we should be done before uh school gets back in. So hopefully I can answer anything else.
So the seventy-seven thousand dollars that the city is paying, is that come out of the general fund or which fund?
Correct.
The general fund? Okay, so you can kind of already imagine what the what the community is gonna say, right? We have seventy-seven thousand dollars for ramp improvements and now for the pool. Another thing is, like last year, we said that we were gonna get the project done right after the school was over and completed before they go back in. And and you say that there was a little concern. It it was a major concern, you know? A lot of people were complaining about it. A lot of a lot of parents, you know, were outraged. So what's what's the guarantee that that we can start this right after the school ends? And you say it's a twenty-two-day project?
A twenty-day project is what it projected to be. So, yes. So this project, obviously from here, if it goes, obviously goes through, yeah, max working days of twenty. So it would be to get design, be ready. Obviously, it would have to go out to bid, get the bid, get it uh awarded, then the contractor, which then, yes, that contractor will maybe a different contractor from last year. So one of the things that we would specify based on that experience is that this is what we experienced last year, this is what we don't want to happen this year. And and yes, that that's that would be my goal, is to make sure that the contractor understands we had, it's a twenty-day project. We have all summer. It needs to be done before school gets goes back in.
Okay. Ms. Hart.
Um, if I remember correctly, though, the delay was on on the part of um wasn't on the part of getting the work done. There was the delay actually was a result of this council not approving the monies, approving the contracts in a timely fashion, if I recall, and that threw the whole business of the construction, and it was just, you know, trying to bring everybody up to date on what that particular money was supposed to be spent for. There was some confusion there, if I remember correctly. And so that did that did push out the uh starting of the construction until sometime in July, was it? Mid-July or early in August?
We we did start in in June, but it was towards the end of June by the time everything got lined up. We did start a little later than what we were hoping to as soon as school got out, but then there was also, by the time the contractor got here and got going, it was towards the end of June.
Okay.
But that it did push.
But it was a bit, there was a delay at the top front end of it.
Correct.
Okay. Once they get, once they got working rather smoothly, if I'm correct.
But didn't that get in get on in time? Didn't we sign the paperwork to have it started on time? It was just delayed until we figured out questions on it?
Well, there that was a little bit of a delay on that. I I believe there was a little discussion about the um the the ramps that were chosen from the original.
I had another question, too.
Go ahead, Ms. Ripley.
Um, I'm wondering, do we have the money for this? Because w- we've been finding all these bills that haven't been paid, and we're having to pay them now, and is what, I mean, we're gonna go through this whole year still trying to figure out our finances, and do we get into this? Wondering if we're gonna be able to pay for it? What's, is there a backup for the seventy-seven thousand? You know, we can't open the pool and.
So the the general fund is serving as the backup. The the optimum place for this money to come from is the transportation benefit district fees, the license plate fees. So however much over what we budgeted for revenue for license plate fees will be to offset this, we also have um budgeted to spend all of the street fund revenue, which also has a subsidy coming from the general fund also. So however much more in revenue we receive in street revenues will be, that would be, that's the, that's, we won't have to get money from the general fund to support that. Same with with this one. If we receive more transportation benefit district fees, the license plate fees, well, actually, we have a tax.
We have a tax.
We have a tax. We don't have license plates. So the more tax we receive, the less reliance on the general fund there will be. And this is the only project that is budgeted for next year um out of that street capital fund, and we did not um uh, we received the grant notice before we did the budget, so we were able to include it in there.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So.
Other questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So is is this grant already awarded to the city?
Yes.
It it has been awarded to the city. Um, okay. Yeah, I mean, I I have the same frustrations, right, from Counselor um Ripley, but it's something that we need and we don't need at the same time. I mean, we we need to improve the the sidewalks, but at the same time, where do we find the the money? But I want to say what you're saying, that it could come in general with, you know, revenue with 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 some of the transportation, you know, taxes.
Right, because we want, we want to budget for sure things.
Yeah. So I mean, I I'd rather, I'd rather pay the seventy-seven thousand than the four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand. But I I think we just need to make sure that that message gets across, you know, for for our community to understand that that's that's what we're doing, right? It's 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 the majority of it is is a grant. Yeah, you know, can those seventy-seven thousand be used towards the pool? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe it's coming from the transportation um fees. So I think just the messaging, you know, I I could already feel the the backlash.
And in this case, for what we budgeted, we budgeted seventy-seven thousand from the general fund. If we were budgeting the seventy-seven thousand from the license plate tax, that could not be used for the pool. That can only be used.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is the which is the benefit and purpose of that.
Ms. Hart.
I I think Ms. Zabel answered my my question, is that money can only come out of the uh um this Capitol Street Fund for for the streets, and you can't, you can't mix those monies.
So council's been asking my questions along all along here, so I'm really appreciative of that, because I'm I'm not real wild about this coming out of the general fund either, considering the way that our budget is looking as we inch our way into this year, we're finding more and more uh issues that need to be contented with. We're finding more and more issues that need to be contented with. So do you have any idea what we received on the TBD sales tax last year?
I do. It's, I want to say it's near a million dollars.
Okay. Okay, and so there's a likelihood that that $77,000 can come from that TBD fund?
Yes.
And it will not negatively impact our general fund? And that's kind of what we're hoping for? That's, that's the end goal here? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, because I wanted to make that point that, that deputy mayor made, you know, the, the public perception of it. So Ben and, and Raul, can you explain to the public the ADA requirements? The state is pressuring us to fix these, so we can only defer it for so long. The other point that Debbie made, that the, you know, and I get the $77,000 on a match is coming from those restricted funds and the, from the benefit districts. So, you know, the funding's there, and, you know, everybody sees a number like $77,000. Oh, my goodness, you know, the pool's closing. I, I mean, these are things that we have to do. The state's mandating it. We can't put it off. And I think the ramifications are, we'll get, we'll get penalized. So can you guys speak to that a little bit, so everybody's clear?
So what we did, last year, we completed at the beginning of the year, the self-assessment, which was where we went through and evaluated every sidewalk and crosswalk and ramp and everything, and we, we came up with, with an assessment of where the city was with all these ramps. Now, in order to, to go out for, for these types of grants, we need to do that, or else we would not qualify. So then when we're talking about sidewalks and ramps are going to, they're out of compliance and going forward, and the state mandating that we need to do something, if we don't have that self-assessment, then we would not be qualifying for these grants. And this is going to be an ongoing thing, because we, we know that, you know, just like these 26 ramps, it's going to cost half a million. But this way, it allows us to continue to apply for these grants and be able to keep replacing what we can annually.
And may I add one other thing? And, and from experience in Tri-Cities, I, I can tell you that there was a rash of lawsuits for uncompliant ADA platforms, and then, then in particular in Richland, there was an older strip center there where many of the businesses were out of ADA compliance. And guess what? Those are, those are huge lawsuits. So, so if an individual was to get hurt or even killed because, you know, that was in a wheelchair or was disabled in some capacity and we were out of compliance, we, we'd face further ramifications way beyond $77,000. So, I mean, it's, it's a great investment for us from a risk standpoint, and then also to get these things compliant, because the state's going to push us no matter what we do. And then I think Raul made a really good point, so thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Radley, do you want to add to this, or?
Echoing the sentiments, the ADA compliance is mandatory. It's, it's, it's not something you can choose not to do in this particular situation. So extended public buildings, things that are supposed to be open to the public are owned by the city in this particular situation, have to be ADA compliant. And so it's not something you can choose not to do in this particular situation. Similarly, like Mike, Mike was talking about here, if you're not ADA compliant and then someone from the public is injured in that situation, not only are you liable, but you're also sanctionable by the state for that purpose. So you can even be closed down. It's, it's not worth the risk in this situation because it's mandatory.
And I think another thing to keep in mind, too, is the TBD funds, transportation benefit district funds can only be used for transportation-based things. We could not switch that over to open the pool, for example, if we wanted to. There are a lot of rules that are governing the use of these funds and how we can use them. So it sounds like, oh, man, you're sacrificing the kids in the pool to do this. We're not allowed to use those monies to open the pool, not allowed to use those monies to open the community center. It has to be based only for transportation-based, and these ADA compliant ramps are, do fall under that umbrella, so. Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Um, Mr. City Manager, is, is that something, I guess, you can do like a video explaining to the public?
I'm thinking I'll write an article, because I've, I've been writing more blog articles to explain things, so I think this would be a good opportunity to do that. So I'm, my wheels are definitely spinning to explain and, you know, make sure.
I mean, we could understand it, but then, you know.
Yeah, it, it's complex, because I, I think the biggest thing that gets misunderstood is the fact that we have this transportation improvement district, and you have a bucket of money, and people go, well, you got a million bucks right there, why can't you use it somewhere else? Because, because it's intended, we set that up to, to fix our roads, and you, and that's not a transferable fund. They really want you to use it for improvements, so it enhances the economy, it enhances our roads, so that's the intent. So with that being said, I, I will work on that, because I think it's important that people understand. And I know the timing was, this year with schools, was not our preferred timing. Fortunately, there wasn't, you know, there wasn't too many issues there, but our preference is not to start it near school, because I know there was a lot of upset parents and, you know, the school district, they worked, well, they were great to work with, but they would have also preferred a different time.
Okay, Ms. Hart, you had a question?
I think they've been answered.
Okay. Further questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement and all associated documents with the award.
I'll second.
All right, thank you for reading that, Councilor Hart. Motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Vasquez. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. I too vote aye, motion passes. All right, and then we'll go up to what's on the agenda as item A. The TIB Complete Streets Award, approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the task order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this dovetails on our prior item. The, this item is to execute a task order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying to prepare engineering and perform construction administration services for that ADA ramp replacement project we just talked about. The city, to remind everybody, we were awarded $437,138 for the design and construction. Our responsibility is $77,142. And Raul's here to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Raul, do you want to give a report first?
Sure. So thank you. Yeah, so what we have here, the task order for HLA to do the construction and design engineering for this project, as you can see there in the task order, it'll, it provides all the tasks that they'll be doing to, to meet the, the, the task order. If you have any questions on any one of these, please, I'd be glad to answer that.
Council members, any questions for Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So the engineering has to be done by HLA and then sent out to, to bid?
So, yeah, so engineer, HLA will put this together, that they'll take care of the process for doing the ad and taking care of all the, all the bidding. They will take care of the, the construction engineering, some middles. So, yes.
Because the way I, I read it here is this design engineering will be completed spring 2025. So that means that HLA, I mean, somebody can't bid on a project without looking at the engineering. So it sounds like HLA is going to still do the engineering and, and complete it by spring of 2025. Does that give us enough time to get the bids in? Because I understand we needed at least three bids?
Yes. Well, we, we, we'll see how many people, yeah.
Minimum.
Yeah, we, well, I mean, in, in something like this, I mean, you could have one bidder. I mean, technically, it could happen. We've had it happen in other projects, but yes, it'll, it'll go out, and then we'll see how many bidders we get. The lowest bidder will then, you know, be awarded the project. It'll go through the review stage. If everything looks good, then that is awarded, and then we move forward with the, a meeting with that contractor and say, this is, this is what we need done, this is when we want to start by, and, and it goes from there.
Okay. Ms. Hart.
And so the monies are already part of that grant and then part of our, what our 15% match is.
Correct.
So that, all of it's covered.
In the grant. Everything's already in the grant. Everything will be built through the grant. There'll be some middles. We will pay for that through the submittals. We'll get reimbursed it back from, from TIB.
Further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing city manager to execute the task order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying, Inc.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Ripley to approve the previously read motion. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. I too vote aye, motion passes. All right. Item nine, items from council members. Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions, and I think I'm just going to lump into that our council standing subcommittee's assignments. Deputy Mayor and I met last week and went through that together. I felt it was important to include the deputy mayor in this and get some, get some different feedback, and I was very grateful for your help, sir. Thank you for all of that and your participation there. There were some changes, and there are some areas where no changes were made, and we both agreed on those, and so I'm going to go down the list. If there's anything that you are vehemently opposed to, please let us know, and changes can be made. But I want to give everybody an opportunity to be on all of the council subcommittees and learn all different aspects of how our city works. But there are some changes that, some things that are going to stay the same from this past year, so. So our Subcommittee on Public Safety, we've appointed Deputy Mayor Galván, Councilor Hart, and Councilor Vasquez. Our Subcommittee on Finance and Administrative Services, we felt that that committee should stay the same. This is a committee that has been working since early in the budget season, meeting regularly with our finance director and going over line by line with the budget. They have a rhythm, they've got a system that they've instituted, and we want to keep that functioning. We don't want to bring it in and have people have to start all over again, so we've decided that we're going to keep this committee the same, and that committee will be Deputy Mayor Galván, Councilor Vasquez, and Councilor Ripley. Our Subcommittee on Public Works, that will be myself, Councilor Beeler, and then we have it open, it can either be Councilor Frausto or Councilor Vasquez. I'm inclined towards Councilor Frausto on this one, unless Ms. Vasquez is very strongly no. Okay, then we will put Councilor Frausto there. Obviously, she's not here to object, but if she does, she can certainly come to us, and we can make adjustments as necessary. All right. Subcommittee on Community Development, we have put in there Councilor Ripley, Councilor Beeler, and Councilor Hart.
Hart and Ripley?
Yes. And then our Subcommittee on Rules. The Subcommittee on Rules is always made up of the mayor and the deputy mayor and one council member. Last year, that council member was Councilor Hart. I put her in there because she is a former mayor, and so I wanted her input, but this year, we've decided to change that up. It will be myself as mayor, Deputy Mayor Galván, and Councilor Frausto. And then the 2025 Commissions, Committees, Boards, et cetera. On the Community and Economic Development Commission, the council representative will be Councilor Vasquez. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, that is remaining unchanged, that will be Deputy Mayor Galván. Okay, he's done an awesome amount of work this past year to get things up and running, and so we will continue with that unchanged. Arts Commission, we've placed Councilor Hart. Hopefully, we can get that up and functioning again. And then Airport Advisory Board, I've placed myself on that, or we've placed me on that. Parks and Recreation will be Councilor Ripley. Sunnyside United Unidos will be Councilor Frausto. Driving Rural Yakima Valley Economy will be Councilor Beeler. And then we had just one extra one, Yakima County Solid Waste Advisory Group, and we put Councilor Beeler on that one as well, because they don't really meet very often. I think that's once a year at the most? Maybe, yes. They did not meet this past year, I can tell you that. All right, so if there are questions or concerns on any of these committee assignments, please speak to me or Deputy Mayor, and we can make adjustments, but at this point, this is what we came up with in our meeting this past week. Ms. Hart.
Does, does the, the representatives to YVCOG, are you expecting those to stay the same?
Okay, so we did have notes on YVCOG, and did we not approve something earlier this, earlier in '24, at the end of the?
We're going to confirm. I believe we spoke to the matter of YVCOG.
Right.
Mistaken.
And you were on the executive, and we kept you there. And it was Councilor Ripley and Frausto were the representatives, and I do believe we left them the same, am I correct on that one?
I believe so.
But we need to, I was going to talk to Jackie about that and have not had a chance to meet with her, and of course, she's sick today, so. But we will look into that and get those questions answered.
Yeah, thank you. Cool.
All right. Item B, other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council.
And we will start with Councilor Vasquez.
Yeah, so I had the privilege to show up to last Monday's swearing ceremony for the firefighters and police officers, and that was really nice to see, just to see all the families come together and celebrating their family members who have that passion and who have dedicated their lives to serve the community and the front lines, and to just be there for all the tough things that go, that happens. For example, in California, the fires and, you know, all the firefighters, I saw posters. Some of the firefighters went out, so I've been extending prayers their way, and even the police officers. My heart's been very, very, very heavy lately because of what just happened in our community. It was a day that just shook us all up, and we, we, I'm not lying, I saw cops going everywhere, police officers were going everywhere. I was in downtown working, and some of my youth employees even told me, hey, do you think we should close early? It's pretty hectic, you know? The high school, the, the students who stayed after school, they had to go under lockdown for the clubs that they stay, and they were just very unsettled. And the fact that one of my youth had to say, do you think we should close early because I don't really feel safe, is very, not something that we want in our community. And I just want to remind us all, you know, if you have faith, just to pray for our community, because it's very, very important and it's crucial. And I just, my heart goes out, and I just want to say thank you to all the police officers, to all the firefighters, because we couldn't keep going without you all. So thank you for your bravery, and thank you for your hard dedication and for constantly investigating, and we just want this community to be better, and we all need to do our part in that. So I encourage you all to continue to report what you see, and let's get together, and let's be more united to be a stronger community, and that's something I wanted to share. So that'd be it for me.
Thank you. Councilor Ripley.
Erin said it so well, how do I follow that? I, I believe the same as she does. It was, it was, it was phenomenal the way that the police came out, and I'm, it was awesome, and I appreciate you guys. And I did go to the swearing in ceremony, that was very nice. And then I went to the business advisory meeting, and I, I really liked that. I really enjoyed it. There were so many people that came, and it, I think it's bringing Sunnyside together, and that's what we need. And the blogs on Facebook? Want me to go on? I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just the same as my counselor over here to my left. Good to say it before I did, but the same fire, police, good ceremony, I enjoyed it. And the business advisory meeting also going strong. There, there's a lot more people this time around than the last time, there's more people standing up. So hopefully, maybe, you know, we can get a different venue, you know, if it, if it keeps going strong, but hopefully it does. And, you know, big shout out to our PD for handling, you know, business the way you guys did, our chief for the messaging on, on social media. It's, I know it's frustrating for a lot of people out there that just don't understand what the police has to do, and then, you know, prosecuting, and then, there's a lot to it. So our PD did what they had to do, and, you know, big shout out to them, and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Hart.
I just want to say ditto to my colleagues to my left. It was a pretty emotional weekend, but thanks to the good, good work of the, all those involved. Just, if you would say to your department for us that we really appreciate their hard work. I don't remember, what else did I do? I don't know. I did attend the Community Economic Development Commission meeting on Tuesday. I did attend the Community Economic Development Commission meeting on Tuesday, and that group is coming along really nicely. I know we kind of get, poor Derek kind of wound up because we're, we're all over the place. We have so many things that we want to get done right now. You know, the Just Do It Nike's logo is really playing heavily in our minds. But we are looking at things, you know, as far as what we might be able to do in that department for the pool, also for like the chamber, in addition to development within the community as far as industrial and enterprise. So, but I do want to just commend, I really appreciate all of the communications that was put out there as quickly as it was, so thanks to the city manager for that. And, and I'm really excited to hear that our Crime Street Group are out working again. You know, I had somebody tell me yesterday, and then I'll be quiet, but I didn't want to pass this along because it was a kudo. Said before, a couple of years ago, it didn't seem like we were seeing very many police out on the streets. We're not seeing them now. And so just pass that along, we really appreciate that as well. That came from a constituent, so not just me talking, so don't want to forget that.
So the biggest disadvantage is being last, as everybody else gets to say all the cool stuff. I do want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, the swearing-in ceremony. I really enjoy those. I think that our police and fire are individuals that we can be very proud of. And I think for us to be able to be there and witness that and see their family support and the encouragement that they give each other is valuable for us as council members. It reminds us of why we do what we do, and who the people are who we get to support. So I always enjoy those. I do want to thank the manager for your blogs and videos, as well as our police chief for the blogs and videos that you've done. I think you've kept the community very well informed over the course of the last week. I, along with my colleagues, it just kind of felt like the bottom sank out of things when I heard about the shooting. It was absolutely horrible. Yeah, I was, I was out of step for several days because of that, because the thought of a young lady being killed like that is just absolutely more than I want to have to contemplate. It is absolutely completely wrong. So thank you for your information on that, but also thank the police department for your quick response and the quick action you were able to take. I know there were citizens that were helping you in this, that were keeping you informed. And so it was the community, it was the police, it was pulling together. Everybody, I believe, in our community is upset with violence and don't want any more of it, ready for that to be done. And we saw people pulling together, and so I'm very grateful to our community, as well as to our police on all of that. I'm also extremely happy to see the Street Crimes Unit back in action. I think that our police officers are excited to be back in action on Street Crimes Unit as well. And I like the idea that we are proactive to prevent these crimes from happening rather than responding to them. I really don't like bullets flying around town, I don't want to see that anymore. And so if they can prevent that, continue to take guns off the street, that is absolutely brilliant, so. I did have one very unique evening, it's something I've been threatening to do for 10 years now, and I got to do a ride-along with our police on Friday night. I took the evening shift on Friday night from 6:00 to 6:00. I made it until 3:00 AM. I am no longer 22, so a 12-hour police shift overnight was probably more than I could handle. But I got to ride with Sergeant Rose now and just see what is done. And I know I'm always hearing accusations that our police are not active enough. In the first 15 minutes, we wrote, we had two traffic stops, and in, over the course of a couple of hours, I think we had a total of four. And when we compared notes with the other patrol officers, they each also had four. So there's, you know, 12 traffic stops being made in the course of three hours in the evening. And it's for all sorts of stuff. They were seeing things that I don't even know to look for. I don't pay attention to whether somebody's got a license plate on the front of the car, and they did, and trust me, when they see it, they whip around and you better be hanging on. Broken taillights, which led to an arrest. People walking out on their bill at a restaurant, and they got the information and they were on it. They knew who it was, knew where to find them, and they got to it in a hurry. I only have kudos for our police officers. That is a proactive bunch of individuals. They take their job seriously. When there's an assault, they get in there in a very respectable manner, but they get the job done. I got to witness how they handled that. They let me sit in the car, they didn't really want me wandering around getting in the way, so I did very much stay out of the way. But I didn't, I didn't ask a lot of questions. I wasn't there to criticize the procedures, I wasn't there to critique them. I was there to learn and get the experience, and it was phenomenal. And I, and I encourage council members to do that. I understand that a Friday or Saturday night in the summer is, has even got more action. And so I think what I'll do is I'll, during the summer, probably take another ride and see, see the difference. But it does open your eyes to what they do and the abuse that they take, the verbal abuse. It's absolutely tremendous. They're handling a traffic stop and taking care of phone calls and taking care of requests over the radio. They've got multiple things going on all at the same time, so it's quite a job. So, all right. Upcoming council meetings, Mr. City Manager?
So I wanted to let everyone know, we'll have a workshop on January 21st. So Monday is a holiday, so put that on your calendar. Yes, so that workshop will be on Tuesday, and I wanted to let the council know. So we'll be discussing some pretty important topics. The community center, give the public and the council an update on what we're doing to rent it out and market it. Obviously, the staff isn't out there anymore, but to the public, we're still utilizing it and programming it, and it is for rent, and so you can utilize that. We're coming up with a website page right now and, and different methodologies where you can rent it. So, so give us a little bit of patience out there, but it's coming to fruition pretty soon. We're going to talk about the animal control issues. So Derek's working on that. We're going to talk about the pool and some funding options, because I think if, if we're going to open the pool or not, we have to make a pretty quick decision on what we're going to do, because I'm learning a lot about pools. We have to hire lifeguards, and no one wants me to be the head lifeguard out there. So, you know, so we need a head lifeguard, you need management. It's quite an operation, so we'll go over some of those parameters and then also talk about some of the 2025 goals that I have. And, you know, I'll let council in, you know, how you guys want to prioritize that and what we go after. But, so there's a lot of work ahead in 2025. Also wanted to thank Chief Lehman and his staff. Obviously, last Tuesday, we had the tragic shooting. I was on the phone with chief probably till 10 o'clock, just, he was keeping me updated, so really appreciated that. And then we all got up early, and Deputy Mayor Galván, we all worked on the video message and that chief delivered, which I think was received very well. You know, one, one thing, and, you know, it's kind of the elephant in the room. He captured the two individuals, and I'm just going to say it. You know, one of the guys, I believe, is out on a $5,000 bond. Unacceptable. You know, we works, these guys work so hard, and I don't want chief to say this, because, you know, I got to say it, because it's just unacceptable. How are we going to make this community safe if we're letting these guys out on a $5,000 bond? And I, you know, I debated whether to say this or not, because, you know, you ruffle feathers in the court, but help us. We're capturing these individuals, help us out. You know, don't let them out of jail if they're, you know, you're innocent till proven guilty. I believe that, but in some cases, come on, help us out. We're struggling, we're fighting. These guys are putting their lives on the line to capture these individuals, and you let them out on a $5,000 bond? Unacceptable. It's just, it's reprehensible, and I'm going to get off this soapbox, but how can we move this community forward if you don't help us out? Please help us.
I was a little late getting here. But I did have a. Sir, Dr. Stevens, please. I understand, but you need, this is not your time. We can give you time in a minute, sir. All right, did you want to comment on the January 27 meeting?
That will be a regular meeting, so I think we'll have the full council back. I know Councilor Frausto will be back from her vacation, so that should be a good meeting. And I know the agenda, we're working on a few different items. And I will say Debbie is going on a much deserved vacation. And I'd like to give her a round of applause for all her work, because she, she has been tireless, and so she's going to take a few days out of the office. Thank you for all your work, and I know she's worked weekends, Sundays. I mean, she has worked, I mean, I'll leave, and she's still burning the midnight oil, so, you know, she's had quite a task. I'm like, there's some days I go, don't you leave us until, you know. So she's been a friend and a mentor, and just somebody that's been, you know, just really invaluable to getting this city back on its feet. So thank you, Debbie, from, you know, all my heart before I start to cry up here, but she has been incredible. Thank you.
All right, and I think that we would all echo that sentiment, Miss Abel. The amount of effort that you put into clarifying our financial situation, even though it hasn't been pleasant to hear. You put a lot of time and effort in there, you've been completely transparent and honest with us. And it makes us cringe when we hear it, but at the same time, it's what we need to hear, it's what we need to see, because we cannot move forward until we know where we are. So I appreciate your time and effort. It has been invaluable to the city as a whole, not just City Hall. So the public has the right to know, and they appreciate knowing, so. Although the texts and the emails and the phone calls that I sometimes receive, maybe they don't appreciate knowing, I don't know, but it's. Okay. Item 10, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
So I think one thing on the positive coming out of the recent tragedy, I've been on the phone and talking to community members, and I've exchanged some emails with Brian Ace, he's the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. So I wanted to invite the council, if we don't want to quorum, maybe three, that he's planning on visiting us February 5th to get the conversation started, to perhaps program the community center, so they're interested in that. You know, the talks are very preliminary. I'm starting to get emails from, I just got an email from a community member saying, how can I help? So I feel like people are, you know, really responding to the calls to action, and I've been in conversation with some faith leaders that maybe want to program the community center. So, I mean, I feel like the community is coming together. There's a rise for action, and I think people are tired of the riffraff, because, you know, we have such great people here. Like, we want good for this community, and, and I appreciate the council's support of me and my efforts, and, you know, because you guys have been great in just supporting me and everything I do. So that, that much, I really appreciate that. So I feel like I have great support from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have executive session here, but I'm assuming that's just a placeholder for.
Yes.
Because there's no RCW attached to it, so we're not having an executive session.
Thanks.
All right, there being no further business to come before council, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, 7:12. And have a great evening.